Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, October 2nd, 2023. Call this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present. With that, I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, the United States of America, and to this whole community and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I have a quick item under general this evening, and that is, on behalf of the City Council, I would like to thank the citizens of Saco who brought forward their concerns through the grievance petition. While the City Council has confirmed or see to the grievance petition, the Council does not have the jurisdiction to suspend the Planning Board's consideration of a pending application, and the City Council does not intend to interfere with the Planning Board proceedings. We will not investigate the concerns brought forward until a final vote on the Lincoln Village project has occurred. However, we are exploring the formation of a committee to make recommendations as to any necessary changes to the Planning Board ordinance based on the comments and motions made at the hearing. The proposed committee would consist of representatives from the Council, the Planning Board, and members of the public. For the first course of action, excuse me, as the mayor, I will meet with and encourage the Planning Board Chair to establish rules that specifically clarify how motions for reconsideration and tie vote should be handled, which will be reviewed and adopted by the entire board. Thank you very much. That brings us to Item 5, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondence this evening? Counselor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a housekeeping matter, in case you missed it, though, the Planning Board is meeting this week, on Thursday, not Tuesday, Thursday at its usual time at 5:30. There's two items on the agenda, including, I believe, the Lincoln Village subdivision project is the second item. So, I know how traffic can get, about 5:30, so no need to rush. If you're coming there for Lincoln, we'll have plenty of time for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence this evening? Moving on to Item 6, Public Comment. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to speak directly into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Up first is David Aronstein.
Good evening. Thank you. So, I wanted to speak on the issue of the sprinklers and the fire ordinances. Is this the appropriate time? I didn't know if that should wait until the--
You can actually speak now, or you can speak during the public hearing on Item A.
Now's fine. Yeah, absolutely fine. So, I'm here basically to talk a little bit about the ordinance or the proposed idea for sprinklers on single-family homes. And primarily, I'm speaking as sort of my new role as a builder. I'm a newly retired teacher from Thornton Academy, and have been building homes primarily for families for the last maybe three years. Probably, we've built maybe 12 homes. The last few homes, we've installed sprinkler systems, and the sprinkler systems have added somewhere between $14,000 and $17,000 to the cost of the home. In most cases, that was a huge burden when it came to the homeowners. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about that, and especially in light of trying to find a way, in my role now, trying to find a way to find a home, build a home for a young family, adding a $14,000, $15,000, $16,000 bill cost to the home is a huge burden. I also wanted to think about, and have thought a little bit about, well, maybe what's the best way to put this into place? Because I'm not anti-safety whatsoever, and I'm not against sort of protecting families, or protecting homeowners, or protecting the public in general. So, I was thinking, in terms of some of the homes that we've built, we're currently building, my small little company is currently building an ADU down in Kenny Bunkport. The ADU is about 800 square feet. One of the first questions I asked the code enforcement people in Kenny Bunkport was, how is this going to be different than Saco? Because I was so used to working with the code enforcement people from Saco. So, what kind of inspections will we have? What kind of things will I have to do, et cetera, et cetera? And one of the things I asked specifically about were sprinklers, because the last few homes, we had put sprinkler systems in. And he said to me, you don't need to put a sprinkler system in the ADU. I said, okay, great. That sort of answered the question, but then also got me to think about, why don't we have to put a sprinkler system in an ADU? And what's the difference? And so, one of the things that I wanted to suggest tonight was maybe thinking about, not necessarily phasing in the idea of sprinklers, but putting in sprinklers based on the size of the home. So, for example, the last little subdivision that we did, there were four homes in there. There were two fairly large homes and one small home, probably 1,600 square feet, maybe less. And in that home, one-story home, two children, mother and father, one-story ranch. And I was thinking, maybe the way to approach this is not necessarily as sort of a blanket approach across the city, but based on the size of the home. So, for example, if it's a single-family home and it's one-story, 1,600 square feet or less, maybe that doesn't get a sprinkler. But maybe if it's a two-story home, larger home, maybe based on certain square footage sizes, those homes do get sprinklers. And I certainly would be willing to talk to anybody about, well, where do you figure out where the line should be drawn? What's the magic number? You know, and I am, you know, not the person necessarily who has the answer, but I can certainly give you some ideas. And I think that that might be at least an initial way to put this into place where it doesn't create a huge burden for young families who are trying to buy homes, and at the same time protects the public. So, in a larger home, a more complicated home, a home that's larger in terms of square footage, fine, the sprinkler system becomes part of the build of the home. But in a smaller home, where you've basically got people who, in many cases, people are trying to find a way to buy a home for the first time, you're not pricing them out of that opportunity. So, anyway, that was sort of my thoughts or my ideas on the topic, and that's really all I wanted to add. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Up next is David Plaven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm David Plaven. I live at 36 Lower Beach Road in Saco. I'm the Vice President of Seva Shore Saco Bay. I just wanted to make mention that the city has the long-awaited project partnership plan from the Army Corps of Engineers. We're now facing an October 31 deadline. We ask the city to act tactically and ensure that this gets done in a timely manner. Any delay at this point would be a setback that we can't afford, and we need to accelerate the momentum that we have. The PPA is not perfect. The standard amount is not what was promised. There is vague language regarding maintenance and repair, and the documentation on the Corps' own rules regarding non-federal sponsor rules are excluded. However, the city cannot miss this deadline, and if the Corps is uncooperative, we need to address that after the fact. SOS has sent three letters in the last three months to our federal representatives, highlighting the lack of transparency and accountability that is standard operating procedure for the Army Corps. We'll continue that fight, but we won't do it at the cost of delaying this agreement. Four weeks is not a lot of time. Told a public hearing, have the document vetted by the city's legal team and approved by this council. But we need to make sure that the Corps is in lockstep, too. Residents are very much supportive of the city's efforts to get this done, and as was the case five years ago, when confronted with the option of Plan 6 now, or another plan that would need further investigation, the vote was overwhelming to get the job done now. No more delays. The time to act is now. This is a now or never moment, and we saw a splash over just today on waves of four to six feet. So, one can only imagine what it's going to be like when storms come in and those waves are three times as large. It's unfortunate that the city's partner has yet, in this effort, has yet to prove its desire to get this done, but the city can stand firm and face this and put some pressure on the court act now. Act now, once and for all. Thank you.
Thank you. That is it for those that have signed up. If there's any member of the public who wishes to address the City Council, please come forward and be heard.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. Excuse my appearance tonight. However, this is my civic duty and a very timely response to what has happened last week and on Clark's Hill. And I had to come, and I will be leaving right after. Again, thanks to those councilors and Mr. Duros, who I believe were responsible for allowing the citizens grievance petition to be heard last Tuesday, and for obtaining outside legal counsel for advice then and in the future. We will contact you as to when the continuance of the grievance hearing can be coordinated. Attorney Langsdorf has stated, "We agree. The language of the petition is not binding. Counsel has no legal role. The grievance will not interfere in a pending Planning Board application process. Citizens have a right to an unbiased group of appointees." That we will continue our grievances with the city administrator, planning staff, and Planning Board, and may, if dissatisfied, bring our grievances to the appellate level, appeals, or court, and I will add, the main board of overseers of the bar. Mr. Langsdorf stated all issues as to due process, bias, violations of charter, ordinances, processes are all proper issues to raise with Planning Board or on appeals. None of the issues as presented yet can be resolved by this council. Attorney Langsdorf stated, "The only role council has to the Planning Board is appointment, approval, and right of investigation. It's due processes and hearing to remove such individuals for due cause." As to our grievance with employees, it is administrator's sole jurisdiction and role upon which we will address. Which brings me to Saco Bay News' recent comment by the mayor stating, in quotes, "Neither he nor the city council could do much about an issue before the Planning Board. Our grievance, although based upon the pending application and what has transpired over several months, goes much more deeper to individuals. Counsel does have the right to investigate misconduct, violations of Code of Ethics, conduct, or oath of office, which is already on the record, be it audio or our video that we recorded." This pending application is coming to a close. The violations are there. You can proactively start reviewing the charter code, the charter codes or record as to how to proceed prior to the continued grievance hearing. You can also start amending charter and code provisions. Now being compelled, over the years, I remain deeply concerned that some elected officials and appointees, let me change, that some elected officials at the council dais, or appointees who sit there, or most recently at the grievance hearing, are not fully engaged with citizens' issues or concerns when personally witnessing their texting or typing, as well as citizens overhearing counselors' dismissive conversations about those they were elected to represent and to serve, all of us. Please stop unless it is an emergency. Lastly, in regards to Clark's Hill, please accept this extremely special generous gift, to be used only for open space and recreational purposes. Please ensure through deed, exhibit, or restrictions and/or restrictions, one, the view of the Saco River from Clark's Hill will remain for all who sit on the bench, walk, or even drive, and all will continue to have the opportunity to enjoy it. Two, prohibiting development of the property. Three, the city SPR Department will mow the field at least once a year before snowfall so that it can continue to be used for sledding and other recreational uses as appropriate and to manage for public recreational use. Four, that the city places a memorial granite bench at the top of Clark's Hill in honor of Richard Clark. Five, to reimburse the Clark's granite bench at the top of Clark's Hill in honor of Richard Clark, sorry. Five, to reimburse the Clark's their $7,200 survey, and to open dialogue as to the granite bench inscription with costs borne by the city, and that the deed with restriction state in perpetuity and irrevocable for the enjoyment of generations to come. To the Clark family, thank you again for your generous offer of Clark's Hill to the city of Saco, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me the extra time.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the City Council, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. I'm Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road. Excuse me. I'd like to just state that I agree with all of the comments that Ms. Archer presented to you this evening. I'd like to share that I also feel that the citizens' grievance, the issues that have been raised, need to continue to be addressed, and with Attorney Langsdorf's commentary, that can happen. So, the citizens' grievance is not limited to only the issues presented that evening. So, in all efforts to be in the search for fairness and to allow public concerns to be formally addressed and discussed, I am committed to assisting with that process for the grievance to continue to move forward. I wanted to share, I did a little research over the weekend about Planning Board minutes. And what I determined is that for many, many, many years, the standard for Planning Board minutes, whenever there was a public hearing, if you look at any of those minutes prior to about 2019 and before, the actual month is October, October 2019 and before, if you look at the minutes from Planning Board meetings, if there was a public hearing, not only were the names and addresses of citizens in those minutes, but next to their names, the administrative assistant, or maybe the planner, him or herself, had also recorded the topic that the citizen had brought forward or the concern. And when I look back at those minutes, they are a very complete record. One can see what the Planning Board decided, their deliberations, their actions. One can see what the applicant brought forward, information, therefore. But when one looks at the Planning Board minutes now, the only thing you're going to see with a public hearing in those minutes are the names of citizens who spoke and their address. And thereby, those minutes are not really reflective of the public input into the meeting. And thereby, those minutes are not really reflective of the public input into the meeting. In my research, I did determine, this is just a factual comment, Mr. Hamblin, in his tenure, practiced that of having some comments next to the citizens' names in the public hearing part of the minutes. And when, this is just an observation, this is not a judgment, but when Ms. Emily Cole Prescott began her first tenure as city planner, that practice stopped. When Mr. Hamblin came back as interim city planner, he continued Ms. Cole Prescott's practice of not including a comment, a topic, or a concern in those minutes. So I wanted to bring that forward this evening, simply as I think it's a very relevant example, perhaps inadvertent, how public comments, public testimony, the topics, the concerns, are lost in the ether. And while those minutes do say, for the full record, one can go to the audio, I think it's really important to point out that the audio or now video record are important, that is, the public record, anyone can watch or listen to for the full experience if one misses the meeting. But that a planning board member listening during a public hearing, it's certainly their prerogative if they take notes or not. Sometimes people just want to listen and not take notes. Thereby, the minutes become that much more important, not only for a planning board member to look back at minutes, but also for members of the public. So I just bring that forward to you as an observation, and that's something that I would like to bring up with the, the planning department and see if that during, for the minutes of the meeting, that if there is a public hearing, next to citizens' names and their address, the topic, the concern is also recorded. I also wanted just briefly to go back to the meeting a week ago on September 25th. And when the citizens submitted the grievance packet for publication or posting on the city website, I believe it was Counselor Purdy who had very thoughtfully said at the last council meeting that the issue had to be looked at from all angles and that one needs to consider all angles when one considers a document such as this. I appreciate that very much. I can tell you that citizens did look at this from all angles. Every document in that grievance packet was a public document. It was a public record, it was a public submission, it was a FOIA document, every document in the packet was public. And I wanted to simply state that to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard.
Hi, Gary Salamaca. I live at 50 Old Orchard Road in Saco. Hear about the residential sprinkler systems? They sound really good on the surface.
Gary, would you like to speak during this moment, or would you like to speak at the public hearing which we're going to open?
Public hearing. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Moving on. There's no minutes to approve, so that brings us to the consent agenda, which is Agenda Item Eight. On there is Item A, an application for a solid waste permit for Doian's Property Maintenance and Landscaping, Inc. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Berman. Any discussion? Roll call, vote to approve the consent agenda. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to Item Nine, action items. Item A, on page five in your packet, is a public hearing for City Code Chapter 102, Fire Prevention Revisions, signed to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Department respectfully requests the city council consider proposed changes to City Code for Chapter 102, Fire Prevention. Chapter 102 has not been formally reviewed for 10 years or more, does not capture current operational methods. The goals of updating Chapter 102 are to ensure accurate reference to appropriate additions of codes and standards and/or refine several definitions, adjust the description of fire hydrants to align with requirements of the Maine Water Company, and add reference to and expand upon the residential fire sprinkler requirements incorporated into the subdivision ordinance. The proposed revision to Chapter 102 will help to maintain adequate fire and life safety measures for Saco residents as LD 2003, known as an Act to Implement the Recommendations of the Commission to Increase Housing Opportunities in Maine by Studying Zoning and Land Use Restrictions, is implemented. City staff recommend that the city council open the public hearing. So I move to open the public hearing for the City Code, Chapter 102, Fire Prevention Revisions.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch to open the public hearing. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing at 6:55. Members of the public who would like to address the city council on the Chapter 102, Fire Prevention Revisions, please come forward.
Okay, I'm back. Gary Salamaca, 50 Old Orchard Road, Saco. So like I said, the sprinkler system on the surface sounds pretty good. I spoke with code enforcement today, and prior to the creation of your ordinance requiring sprinkler systems, I guess about two and a half years ago, how many, I asked the code, how many permits were taken out prior to that for residential sprinkler systems? The answer was very few. Why is this? I would assume it might be danger versus cost. It's not like the city said you can't have a sprinkler system in the past. It's a choice, and it needs to remain a choice. As far as a question for the council, I didn't know if I wanted to answer, I wanted to ask this or not, but I'm going to. And I don't want an answer, but... How many people here on this council bought a house without a sprinkler system? And if you didn't have a sprinkler system, how many people felt enough danger or care for their family, I guess, to add a sprinkler system? Don't answer it. So statistics, and if I'm wrong, Dave can correct me. 2023, how many people died in Maine from fires? 2023, how many people died in Saco from fires? I don't know. Dave can answer it. Highway deaths in 2020 were 164. 2022, they're 183 versus 12 deaths from fire, which we're not even sure what the circumstances were for those 12 people. Cost to install a sprinkler system, and that's really where I'm going to, versus danger or worry for your family versus cost, first home, time home buyers. So, and a gentleman just spoke to that cost a little bit. Cost to install a sprinkler system is anywhere from 13,000 to 20,000. He was a little lower. But if you build a new subdivision, you have to put an inch and a half service into your house now to be able to handle these sprinkler systems versus an inch. And the problem with Old Orchard in Saco is our, our water pressures are low, and you have to have at least 50, my, my three minutes up? Okay. You have to have at least 50 pounds pressure, or you're putting a pump in a tank in your So based on cost, I've dealt with, I've built probably a couple hundred homes in Saco, condos and homes. Based on cost, a homeowner might be able, be able to afford 399,000. But when you add another 20 grand to it, it ends up being 419,000, which could take them right out of the market. And houses are disgustingly high as it is. And then I'll get that question from government or whatever, what about affordable housing? You can't go this way and ask me about fertile housing, affordable housing. There's no connection. So based on the risk versus reward, and of course, in my opinion, leave the system a choice. It's always been a choice. It should still be a choice. It shouldn't be mandated by the government. It should still be a choice. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to speak on this issue, please come forward and be heard. Remember to state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
Kyle Creations, Bay Road, Saco, Maine. I'm code officer, member of the Maine Technical Codes and Standards Board. I want to refute what his comment was, what 13 deaths, it's only 12. Three of them campfires, so sprinklers would not help these people. One in a camper out in Mercer, no water there. Two in a hotel fire down in Kittery. Another one caught himself on fire in the middle of the lawn. So the number of fire deaths in residential buildings is very low this year. You all have got something like this, except in a, in a version that didn't need to be visually enhanced, for us people who are old. So the, the board actually went through this analysis, because the state adopted 2018 NFPA 101, would determine it was not worth the cost. And the fact is, if you support a sprinkler system in your home, you still have to put the 5.7 square foot windows, there's no way around that. If you're doing energy savings, which you have to do now, putting sprinklers over the trusses creates an issue where now you have to air seal around those pockets, around the pipes, otherwise now you don't get to blow a door test. And the cost is way beyond what people are stating. Then if you're, I understand, if you're in a subdivision, doing that versus a fire pond, yeah, I mean, last year, I don't think you could have a fire pond that had any water in it, unless you pumped it in there. So that, I can understand. But in town here, with this fire hydrants, wherever, there's a, we're not seeing the issue, and like I said, Saco hasn't had one. I was doing code enforcement in Gorham, they had one fire death in an elderly home with sprinklers. So that doesn't mean sprinklers is going to save you every time. If you have a fire outside your home, sprinklers is not going to do a damn thing for you. Smoke detectors will. NFPA did a study that 98% of the people who are in a home fire can get out of a home fire, 99% with a smoke detector. So as of 2008, 2009, any home sold that's younger than, is older than 1996, but before 1996, they're required within 30 days to put smoke detectors in. Are we following through with that? I doubt it. Nobody's, and it's a big thing. And same thing with rentals. Most people don't realize the $500 fine to remove a battery out of a smoke detector. And if you have rentals here, you may want to check into that, because that's going to affect you, affect them too. And they need to be brought to that thing. So you need to rethink this, and the reason, I know the reason why the fire department wants it, but I'm going to let them talk to that themselves. There's a whole big thing behind that, so. And as I said, it's, you know, 15 to 20,000 per home, you're not going to get any, decrease in your fire insurance, maybe 10%, which, say you pay $1,000 a year, your fire insurance is probably only like 4. So 10% of 400, you'll never pay that back. And if you live and do, do things right, pay attention to what's going on, you may never ever have a home fire. So you're never ever going to get that money back. It's like throwing money in the, in the toilet. So you only save money if something happens. So, and the same thing, people say, oh, we got seat, seat belts. Well, yeah, but not everybody wears them. So it's not like it's fire sprinkler, you can turn it off. It's there, it's there. And I'm not sure, I may have sent you a packet this Canada Day, it was in 19, early 2000s, $25 million worth of sprinklers had to be installed to save one life. Seat belts, maybe a million dollars worth of seat belts to save one life. So there's a big disparity there. Same thing with the seat belts in airplanes and some other things they do. So whatever we do, I mean, if you look at the federal government, their calculation, the value of a life is about $8 million. So there you go. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard.
Good evening. I'm Jason Labonte, owner of Home Innovations, also a resident of Saco. I come here before you tonight to talk over the fire sprinklers, and I'm going to try to make this brief, because I can make this all night. So I'm going to try to shorten this up and get right to the bullet points. Smoke detectors are already protect us for a fraction of the cost of responding minutes before fire sprinkler systems have gone off, as sprinklers require 155 degrees to go off. So your smoke detectors go off as soon as you get a little bit of smoke. And anybody that's done something bad cooking, you're going to know how fast that is. The fire sprinklers don't go off until 155 degrees. So your smoke detectors are going off a minute, well before a fire sprinkler system. So as far as being notified that there's a fire in your house, the fire sprinkler system's not going to do that. That's what the smoke detectors are for, and you should be out of the house before the sprinklers even kick on. As far as house fires and deaths that have dropped over 62% since 1970 in the United States, and still decreasing, most cities in Maine have less than one house fire a year, in which most of them are older homes, and usually there's no fatalities. Less than 3% of fire departments' calls are actu, are actually fire-related. So 90%, 97% of them is usually just for EMT, car accidents, et cetera. For actually house fires, it's actually only 3% of their calls is actually for house fires. And I've talked to over five fire chiefs in five different towns right here in York County, and all five of them tell me that they've had less than one fire a year for a house fire. So we're looking at, as all us builders, just in York County alone, putting out probably 1,000 houses a year, and we're going to be spending millions of dollars to, in case there's one house fire, and the chances of somebody dying in that house fire is very, very minimal. It's a very, very small number. I think out of like 6,000 house fires, it's like 100 and smudged people. So it sounds like a lot, but when we're looking at 1.3 million people in the state of Maine, it's a very small number compared to the amount of money that you're going to have to spend to cover the whole state and not just York County. So half of the house fires are started from cooking when people are awake and have ample time to get out. If people were concerned, they can buy a fire extinguisher for $20 and keep it in the kitchen with easy access, which is much, a lot cheaper than doing a fire sprinkler system. Other fires are caused by heating, which has changed dramatically due to the, people have stopped using wood stoves, which created a lot of chimney fires. Heating systems have changed from oil heat to propane, and now switching over to heat pumps. Houses today not being built with chimneys anymore and eliminating that human error. So again, as a builder, we're seeing a lot of changes happening. So compared to 20 years ago when people doing wood stoves, chimney fires were super common. I'm sure a lot of you people remember those days. And everybody switched over to oil boilers and switched over to propane, where we're not using chimneys anymore, and now switching over to heat pumps where it's all electric and fossil fuels is becoming a thing of the past. So I think that's very, very important with the new construction standards that's happening and changing with the new energy codes. That's going to be making a big difference for future house fires as well. Last major fire start is electrical. Today's new homes are required to have arc fault breakers, which are super sensitive to electrical grounding, et cetera. Anyone who has a new house understands how sensitive these breakers are, therefore eliminating future electrical fires. Again, older houses, very, very prone to electrical fires, used to have the old fuses and really terrible wiring. Today, wiring is completely different than it used to be. So now we have arc fault breakers that are super sensitive. We often get homeowners buying new houses, where now some of their appliances won't, will trip the breakers, they have to buy new appliances, they have to new, buy new house beaters. Anything with electric motor becomes a problem if it's not up to stand, up to the new standards. So that's how sensitive these arc fault breakers are. So as far as electrical fires, that's like the third leading cause of a house fire. So with these new arc fault breakers, that's changing the industry standards dramatically of that happening in the future. of that happening in the future. State of Maine has refused to make this a state mandate and has been challenged every one to two years, but yet it's still not passed. So why should the city? Clearly, this is a lot of pushback of what the people want. This should be a choice, not a requirement. So you guys have seen this on a city level right now. The state's been dealing with this for years. And the fire departments keep trying to push it back to the state. State keeps pushing back, saying, no, we're not going to require this. So for you, this is something new. For the state, this is very old news. And it's been, they keep constantly challenging it, and it doesn't go through. So why should the city push it through when the state doesn't want it either? So maintenance of the system most likely will never happen. So a lot of these systems won't work over time. Most systems will require pumps, even on city water where the pressure is inadequate. These pumps will freeze up over time if not used. It will not work during power outages, which is when most fires are prone to start. So this is my biggest problem with these systems. As a builder, we constantly got to figure out warranties, this, that, try to educate the people as they're buying these new houses with all this new technology and the way houses are being constructed today. We put a $15,000 to $20,000 fire sprinkler system in. And if they're not circulating this pump once or twice a year, this pump's going to seize up. The pump doesn't get used, it's going to freeze up. It's going to rust, seize up, it ain't going to work no more. So 20, 30 years down the road from now, this house catches on fire. The sprinkler system is going to work anyways. And a lot of people say, well, I'm on city water, I should be all set. Well, I'm doing a 22-lot subdivision on Flag Pond Road. Yes, I'm the guy that blocked the road off for a few weeks. And we have to do, we're looking right now at having to do booster pumps over there or have to go to a tank and pump system because we only have 42 pounds of water pressure over there. And all the engineers are saying we need at least 60 pounds of pressure. Years ago, I did a lot of irrigation installs, and I can tell you 60 pounds of pressure in this city, unless you're on the ocean, you're not getting 60 pounds of pressure, which means every new house will have to have a pump to run these fire sprinkler systems. So I see this as a major problem. I don't think these systems will work shortly because the homeowners aren't going to maintain a $15,000 system, never mind, it's hard enough how many times you see a smoke detector ripped off a wall that only costs, you know, 50 or 100 bucks. And now we're going to have them replace a $2,500 pump in the future. It's not going to happen, I can tell you that right now.
Jason, my apologies, but you've been going over by three and a quarter, or three and a half minutes, so please wrap up.
Okay, all right. I'll try to rip through it. So cost of these systems, 15,000 to 20,000. You've already heard that for a standard house, 16,000 to 18,000 square feet. With a 30-year mortgage, you're looking at at least $40,000 for payback on these systems after they pay back interest, et cetera. How could houses be affordable anymore? Better question is, how can our children afford a new house if we keep adding cost to them? This should not be our decision. This cost should be an option to the homeowner. How would you like to spend their hard-working money? And in 450 homes that I've built, I've never had a customer ask me to install a fire sprinkler system. Think about that for a minute. 450 homes, half of them right here in Saco, never, ever, ever had a homeowner ask me to install a fire sprinkler system or even ask how much it would cost. Okay? I've built over a dozen houses for firefighters. I've had two people actually went through a fire and I rebuilt their home, and still they didn't want a fire sprinkler system in their house. Okay? So I want to point that out. Overall summary, this decision should be for the homeowner to decide. And our city, if our city is that concerned, then you should be looking at educational programs to help community understand how to better prepare for house fires, like having fire extinguishers in certain areas of the house, exit plan strategies. This would be a lot less expensive and reach out to everyone, not just the new homeowners. Education is key. For every member on this board that wishes to pass this, ask one question. If you're prepared to make every homeowner to have a system installed into their homes at such a great cost, and are you prepared to install one in your own personal house as well? I don't feel that it's fair to force someone else if you're not willing to do it yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's any other member of the public that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Councilor Johnston.
Move to close public hearing on City Code Chapter 102, Fire Prevention Revisions, and further move to schedule the second and final reading for October 16th, 2023.
Motion's been made by Councilor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail to close the public hearing and set second and final reading on October 16th, 2023. Any discussion? Councilor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I received a lengthy email from a constituent earlier today with some questions. I forwarded it to Deputy Chief Pendleton. He said he might have some answers for me tonight. I also have two other concerns about the ordinance in addition to the cost of the fire sprinklers. I just want to put it to the record. The first is in what is now 1024D, where it sets the fire chief as being the person who would review requests for waivers. And I am going to move and ask that perhaps the text be updated to making that the city council with the advice of the fire chief. I believe that requests for waivers should be done in public and therefore come to the council. There are also significant questions about 102, Section 7, violations and penalties, most notably 1027A, about what that required permit is referring to. Some of these seem like building code issues and not fire issues. And I'm curious why they're in the language.
Thank you. Can you email your questions and potential motions to amend to the city administrator for review and processing for the October 16th meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And can I inquire whether the deputy chief has any answers to some of my questions now?
I do. I do have some answers. Counsel, those specific ones only?
Anything you'd be willing to address, I would appreciate.
Okay, okay. So I've seen the email that the council is referring to, and there's more than what he mentioned. This is, when it makes its way to the city administrator, it's considered read into the, I don't know what the terminology is, when you read something into the meeting or what have you? Or do I need to read it?
The email has not been forwarded to council or anybody else except for you. So everybody else here is unaware of the contents of the email. But there were some questions about the cost benefit of the sprinkler system, as we've heard from citizens today, as well as some questions about the appeals process, which I mentioned, and the violations and penalty section, as I also alluded to. And any insight you can give us into any of those sections would be appreciated.
Well, the gentleman had a question about...
Deputy Chief Pendleton is the responses to the councilor's questions long that could be emailed to the entire council later this evening or perhaps tomorrow.
Sure.
And could be put out into the public record.
I think that probably makes most sense because then we don't miss anything and it's better than me than searching through this to try to find the right piece.
I agree.
That be okay?
That'd be okay. Thank you. Counselor Berman, are you okay with that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any further discussion, comments? If not, this will be for a second and final reading on October 16th. No further discussion. Roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:19 PM. And with that, we will take a five-minute recess. Five-minute recess. So please be back by 7:25. Okay, we're back at 7:25. Moving on to the next agenda item, and that is item nine, item B on Agenda Item 9. And that's page 25 in your packet. It's a public hearing. Amendments to Chapter 15, Unassigned Fund Balance Policy Updates. Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. This change adds matching funds for grants to the list of qualified use of surplus. Although presented as an amendment to council in February, this change was dropped off of subsequent Chapter 15 exhibits, and so needs to be adopted separately. I move to open the public hearing for the amendments to Chapter 15, Unassigned Fund Balance Policy Updates.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Roll call to open. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing at 7:26 PM. Members of the public that wish to speak to the item, or excuse me, speak to the council on this item, please come forward and be heard. With nobody seeking recognition, Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I move to close the public hearing on Amendments to Chapter 15, Unassigned Fund Balance Policy Updates, and further move to schedule the second and final reading for October 16th, 2023.
Motion's been made by Counselor Hatch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Johnston to close the public hearing, set final reading for October 16th. Any discussion? With no discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 7:27 PM. That brings us to item C, a first reading budget amendment number two, Transportation Center Custodial and Security Contracted Services, on page 27 in your packet, assigned to Counselor Johnston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The most open public use facility the city owns is the transportation center. Serving as the public transportation hub for rail and bus service for Bedford and Saco, the facility has seen an increased foot traffic and activity over the years. Currently, city staff clean and respond to calls for services at the facility. Due to its accessibility and level of activity and based on calls for service increases, city staff proposes supplementing current cleaning and security capabilities with contracted services. This will enhance the cleanliness and public safety at the facility for all visitors, employees, and transit users. Be it all or the city council approves the first reading of Budget Amendment Number Two, Transportation Center Custodial and Security Contracted Services, and moves to schedule a second and final reading for October 16th, 2023. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the background points out, this service is really a regional hub for Bedford and Saco and transportation. Has anybody reached out to Bedford to see if they'd be willing to share some of the costs of security and cleaning?
I can say that there was discussion with B-Sub, the Bedford-Saco Old Door should be transit, which has an office in there. But I cannot speak directly about what happened at those meetings. But this is what was brought forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
City Administrator Duras, any update other than that?
No, I think that's accurate. I mean, it is a Saco facility, and we're looking at the security and the cleanliness of a Saco facility.
Thank you. Any further discussion? With no further discussion, roll call, vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item D, one reading, donation of Clark's Hill on page 29 in your packet assigned to Counsel Berman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Parks and Recreation Department was approached by the children of Richard and Janice Clark regarding what is known today as Clark's Hill, located on the Ferry Road. The parcel has been used during the winter months as a sledding hill for all to enjoy. The property that the Clark family would like to donate is .943 acres, as shown in the survey plan. This parcel of land, if the city accepts, would be used for open space and recreational purposes. By obtaining this parcel, the city will ensure the view of the Saco River from Clark's Hill will remain for all who sit on the bench, walk, or even drive, and will continue to have the opportunity to enjoy it. If the city of Saco agrees to accept the Clark's Hill offer, the Clark family requests that the deed include restrictions prohibiting development of the property, and provides that the city will mow the field at least once a year before the snow falls, so that it continue to be used for sledding and other recreational uses as appropriate. The family also requests that a granite bench be placed at the top of Clark's Hill in honor of Richard Clark. The Clark family is asking for reimbursement for $7,200 for the cost of surveying the property. The cost associated with this donation would be supplied by the Open Space Impact Fees Fund. The Parks and Recreation Department understand that the property known as Clark's Hill would be managed by the department for public recreational use. Be it ordered that the city council accepts the donation of property known as Clark's Hill, honor the restriction, which are prohibiting any development on said property, placing a granite bench in honor of Mr. Richard Clark, and reimbursement of $7,200 for the cost of surveying the property. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman, second by Counselor Johnston. Any discussion? Counselor McFail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just would like to make note that at the Saco Park and Rec advisory meeting the other night, it was discussed with the group, and the entire board was in support and encouragement of this, and are really looking forward to working with Ryan and the staff, and hopefully keep this going for many, many years.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Roll call vote, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item 10, new business, and that is a presentation by Saco Main Street, update by Angie Presby.
How are you guys doing? Thank you for providing me with this time to give an update about Saco Main Street. The three areas I'll touch upon tonight are a grant writing update, update on fundraising efforts, and the relocation to Purple Square for our office and the Saco Scoop. Grant writing, I took a two-day training class through Main Philanthropy Center on May 9th and 10th. In this class, I learned the basics of grant writing. However, Heart of Ellsworth shared their grant proposal for the T-Mobile Hometown Grant, which they were awarded in 2022, and so that was an excellent resource to help structure the grant that I wrote. I applied for a $49,000 grant for the beautification of Purple Square and enhancements to Riverfront Park, which would have provided a minor facelift to the building that our office is in, and added a paver entrance walkway, Adirondack chairs, a solar-powered security camera, new picnic tables, a bike rack, and landscaping to Riverfront Park. I gave myself the month of June to complete this grant in between Bark in the Park and Art Festival planning, and submitted it on June 30. Unfortunately, we were not selected for that grant due to the multitude of grants that they did receive, and they were not providing any feedback. I also applied for $3,500 from the Alfred and Dorothy Susie Osher Foundation for general support on August 17, and $5,000 from the Bank of Main Charitable Foundation for operational support on August 23, both of which I have not heard back from as of yet. On September 15, I applied for $14,000 from the Main Community Foundation's Conservation for All grant to help develop long-term exclusive recreation opportunities for the entire community on the Saco River. I'm thrilled that Saco Parks and Rec will begin programming to utilize the Saco River, so if awarded, this grant would give them an additional boost, including transportation costs for the children temporarily housed at the Comfort Inn, so that they can also have access to the programming. Saco Main Street would receive $2,000 in operational support to administer this grant if awarded, and $12,000 from the Conservation for All grant would go towards Saco Parks and Rec Saco River recreational programming. Saco Main Street and Heart of Bedford are working together on an Entrepreneur Ecosystem Grant that was awarded to Main Downtown Center as a congressionally-directed spending request by Susan Collins and Angus King. Saco Main Street and Heart of Bedford will each receive $6,500 in operational support, and have already received $1,000 for planning costs to get our proposal established. We will receive $7,500 total for operational support. Saco Main Street and Heart of Bedford were both selected by the SMPDC to be spokes for the Economic Development Recovery Hub program, in which we will help implement their program and seek out businesses that can benefit by applying for this grant. Each Main Street will be awarded $15,000 in administration funding over the course of two years for our part in the implementation of the grant. This results in a total of $45,000 in grants that Saco Main Street has either applied for or has been asked to help implement. We are guaranteed $7,500 from the Entrepreneur Ecosystem Grant and $15,000 from the SMPDC grant for operational support. If we are awarded the other grants, that would be an additional $10,500 towards operational support, bringing our total to $25,500 in additional operational support for this year and 75, uh, sorry, $7,500 towards next year through the SMPDC grant. We will also receive $150 to cover transportation costs for the children and families at the Comfort Inn to experience the Pumpkin Harvest Festival, and this is through the Main Community Foundation. An update on our fundraising efforts. In other fundraising efforts, we've formed a development committee. The members of this committee meet for, have met for an hour two times a month since May, and have recently cut down to one meeting a month. We tossed around many ideas to fundraise, and some that stuck were: Give a Dollar Day, a social media campaign, that was $162; tie-dying Saco Main t-shirts at Music in the Park, that was $350; collecting a suggested $5 entrance donation at the car show, that was $1,400; charging for tables at Pumpkin Harvest Festival, that'll be $2,600; having a raffle at the Pumpkin Harvest Festival, similar to the Art Festival, and that will be an estimated $1,000. We're organizing a Main Street haunted walk, estimated to make $250, and Dyer Library and the Saco Museum will also make $250. We're working with Anatole at the Dyer Library and Shannon and Emily in planning to map out the highlighted areas for the walk. Uh, let's see. We're organizing a craft fair at Thornton Academy, estimated to make $5,000, and have created an annual campaign with a $5,000 goal. So for a total of $15,762 of additional fundraising for 2023, if we can reach all goals. We are $4,773 over our business sponsorships than we were at this time last year. The relocation to Pepperell Square in the Saco Scoop. Our office is now in a great location and at the hub of the city. The operational efficiencies we have gained is that being downtown has made us more visible and will allow us to collaborate with businesses and community much easier. Today, we put out a sandwich board on the sidewalk to advertise our events, and that we are open for visitors, so I'm hoping that we will see increased foot traffic through that. By moving to Pepperell Square, we are able to, we were able to host a paint day with pizza for kids in our office. They painted our conference room table. And by moving to Pepperell Square, no, I already said that, we have an Artist of a Month corner. We host our board meetings and all planning meetings there, provides an indoor space to meet up when volunteers come downtown to help with flowers or light posts, and we have our calendar events on the window with a QR code, and many people stop there daily to scan that code. We also have posters up for other various organizations. And we've also talked to Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and they'll be in our office during the holiday of, Festival of Lights for Storytime with Santa. So we're looking forward to decorating our office as a welcoming space for kids to enjoy that day. And now that the Saco Scoop is owned by Melissa and family, who are doing a fabulous job with marketing and creatively using this space for birthdays and other fun activities, Holly has regained time to focus on our events and operations. And each of our events take many hours of coordination and effort, so she's back to that being her priority. So overall, Saco Main Street has increased our grant and fundraising efforts, and will continue to work to bring in additional funding. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions at this moment in time from the council? Counselor McFail?
Thank you. Ah, thank you, Angie. I really appreciate the update. The grant writing sounds amazing. You've taken that, you've done a great job with that. I'm still concerned with the fundraising efforts, though. I'm not saying the large-scale fundraising that I'm hoping that, over the years, council has been looking for.
Yes.
Um, you got the development committee in place.
Mm-hmm.
Which was, is excellent. But again, now you stated that they're starting to slow down. Wouldn't this be the time, like, for next year to be able to plan a larger-scale campaigned, adult-oriented style that is going to bring in the larger, the 10, $15,000 for one event style fundraising, I think, that we're looking for or hoping to see?
Yeah. When did I say it was slowing down?
Uh, you said they were meeting two times, when you first started, two times a month?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we were meeting two times a month, yeah. And that was, that was asking people to take an hour out of their workday, so we had to cut it back a little bit. So, um, they're, they're, uh, so we're meeting one time. But that's also because we've developed the annual campaign, which this year is 5,000, but this is our first time doing it in a while, so we wanted, we wanted to set an achievable goal, so.
And then that is one thing, because we've always pointed out, traditionally, we've never had an official annual campaign.
Yeah.
Putting letters out, asking the, you know, community sponsors. It's been the small stuff. So, yeah, we are looking forward to seeing that improve and hopefully grow as well.
Yes, us too.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Oh, was that, oh, okay. All right.
Counselor Hatch, did you have a question? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes new business, so that brings us to item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Duras?
Um, no report this evening.
Thank you, and that brings us to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Excuse me, thank you. No council discussion and comment, motion, or moving on to item 13, executive session. Is there a motion? Counselor Berman?
Uh, be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Subsection 405.6, a personnel matter.
Motion's been made by Counselor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call to enter executive session, Counselor Archer.
Aye.
Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McFail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston. Motion passes seven zero at 7:42 PM. The executive session will be in the city administrator's conference room. Executive session will be in the City Administrators Conference Room.
So moved.
Counselor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Berman, any discussion? Roll call to adjourn. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?